September fifteenth and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Attending this evening's board meeting live and in the boardroom are board members Paula Cole, Candace, Tim Paulus, Kirk Spencer, and I'm Board Chair Carter. We're joined by Student Representative, singular Vanessa Rosa Miguel. Like was Tiana gonna be here today?
Uh, we thought Tania would be here, but she was unable to make it, it looks like.
Okay, that works out. Also at the table we have Superintendent Steve Yunowski and Assistant to the Superintendent Cassandra Quan. Other members of the District Leadership Team are in attendance and may be participating throughout the meeting as well. Richfield Public Schools' mission is to inspire, empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel, and we aim to keep that focus at the heart of our discussions this evening. Thanks to all of you joining us live here and in the boardroom. We also want to thank those of you streaming the meeting or watching it after the fact via YouTube. We appreciate when people bear witness to our meetings where we conduct the necessary official business of the district. Whew. Tonight, and actually, let's see if I can do this. I'm gonna go a little off-script.
Yeah.
Because I wanted to do this actually at our previous meeting and I want to start something new going forward. So normally we, in large events, we read the land acknowledgement. And so I'd like to get in the habit of us doing that at the beginning of the school year. So, I'm going to read it tonight. And I make sure I read the right quote of it. So, uh, before we begin, I'd like to start by acknowledging that we're located on the ancestral land of the Dakota People who have lived on and care for the land since time immemorial. Indigenous nations have long, have a long history of stewardship and preservation of the local area. We're grateful for the guardianship of these lands which hold historical, spiritual, and personal significance to the Dakota People. To read our district's full land acknowledgement statement, please visit the district website or take the time to view the display at our building entrance in the main office. So, again, new tradition, would like us to start doing that at the beginning of the school year going forward. With that done, we'll move on to the first item of our business, which is the agenda. The agenda is normally routine, but we have one small change tonight. We need to pull out the approval, it's under new business, the authorization of board member to substitute be employed on a casual temporary basis. Is your only change?
That is correct.
Good evening, Tania. I would take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
With that change, I will move the amended agenda.
Thank you.
I second.
We have a motion by Director Paulus and a second by Director Cole. Any questions or comments? Bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The chair votes aye and we have an approved agenda. Moving right along, brings us to information and proposals. Tonight is the night for public comment. We didn't have anybody sign up tonight, so that will bring us to the next, public comment will be October. Didn't write that date down.
The second meeting in October.
Thank you, the second meeting in October. That's easy enough. You can find the specific date on our website.
The twenty-seventh.
The twenty-second, twenty-seventh, that's right. I did have that written down because it is a special meeting.
It's a late one, yep.
It's a late one, it's not our normal third meeting, so incorrect, it's actually the fourth week of the month.
Fair point.
Yeah, because we're handling it for elections, right?
The election, yeah.
Uh, let's see what else. And also I think one of the things to point out too is, public comment needs to be done by noon the day of.
Correct.
Something just to keep in mind. With that, that brings us over to Superintendent Yunowski for our superintendent's update.
Alright, so we have two items tonight on the superintendent update. Second part will be me presenting, second draft of superintendent goals. Part of my public evaluation process for 2025-2026. And, before I do that, we are going to turn things over to Amy Scory-Clacker and Abby Dubey to talk about Centennial After School and our proposed programming. This is a presentation, the information component. There is a vote because we wanted to be very public and transparent about what we're talking about. Just as a reminder, the Twenty-First Century Grant, which has paid for free after-school programming for our students at all of our sites, has run out. The federal government froze all grant funding. And so we currently have extended-day partners at our other three elementaries, but they do not have the capacity to do that at Centennial. And so we have tasked our team in community ed with coming up with creative ideas. And so, Amy and Abby are here to present that to you tonight, so please take it away.
Great, thank you. So, good evening Superintendent Yunowski, Chairman Carter, and members of the school board. As Steve said, I'm Amy Scory-Clacker, Director of Community Ed. Abby Dubey is the Youth Program Coordinator for Richfield Community Ed. She plans a array of enrichment activities and recreational opportunities for youth, as well as a lot of family programs through community ed. So we're here to talk today about Centennial. As Steve set the, or Superintendent Yunowski set the context. Through the Twenty-First Century Grant, Centennial Elementary has had free after-school programming for about six years, called Beacons, and it was running at their sites. And, Richfield Public Schools applied to be part of that again. It's been a great program at the Centennial, at middle school, and at the high school. And because of a federal funding freeze, we did not get that grant this year. So, the funding actually got frozen in July and then was later released in early August, I believe. But, it affected the timeline enough that MDE decided not to run a new cohort of grants this fall. We found that out on August twenty-fifth, that that would not happen and that the funds will be considered for the following year for Richfield. But we also know that federal funds for Twenty-First Century are kind of in flux. All federal funds right now are. So, kind of trying to think of a plan for this year and plans that possibly might impact going forward. And, you know, when we were thinking about Centennial in particular, some of the Beacons programming might still happen at the middle school and high school because they have some alternative funding sources. It won't be as robust as if they have Twenty-First Century, but there will be a little bit. With the Centennial program, Twenty-First Century was the only funding source. And so that program will just not happen there. And we know with it being young children, that a lot of families relied on the Beacons program for childcare. All of our other sites have childcare, they have a fun club at Sheridan, RDLS, and at STEM. And so we started thinking about what that might mean for families and exploring what fee-based options might be able to be available at Centennial if the grant did not come through. Talked with Boys and Girls Club, who ran the Beacon site, to see if maybe there was a way to sort of do a partnership. Talked with Fun Club, they didn't really have the capacity to get something up and running that quickly. So started looking at a community ed run model. But we knew with that community ed run model, we would be on a really tight timeline and we weren't a hundred percent sure of what the need was. And, so, knowing that it might require some subsidization from the district to make it happen. Before we went too far, we also started, we did a survey of Centennial families. And we got really specific with them because we thought, well, we can ask, do you want after-school? And probably a lot of people would say yes, but we, we got really specific and said, if we ran this program, if it started October first, if this was the cost, would you sign up? And we did have about fifty-five students that indicated, or families that indicated their fifty-five students would enroll. That shows the grade breakdown. So we feel like there is definitely a need and that there probably will be a fairly large number of kids who would enroll. Let's see, we can go to the next one. As I said, there will be a little bit of a financial risk. School age care programs are funded really only on parent fees. And at twenty dollars a day, we would need around forty to forty-five, somewhere in there, consistently attending students to really break even on the program. With uncertainty of enrollment, because we don't really, I mean, people said they might sign up or they would sign up, but they haven't signed up yet. And then the fact that we will be offering that sliding scale, it's hard to know exactly how much we'll bring in. Estimated potential risk of sixty-five thousand, but it's dependent on that enrollment and daily participation. I think there's a good chance we would not overexpend by quite that much, but I think there's also a good chance it won't like cover all of its costs. So I think we're talking somewhere in that ballpark. And the general community ed budget right now does not have a fund balance. So any deficit would need to be covered by the district's general fund, that's why we're here. You know, we have a lot of programs, we start up all the time that we know we can cover the costs and this is one of those that we wanted to make sure that the board was on, on board with. Staffing, we had, knowing this was a possibility, we went ahead and posted positions on August seventeenth. In the last couple of weeks, we've been doing interviews. We planned to hire one full-time site lead and then two to three part-time staff that kind of depending on where the numbers really are when people register. We've identified a strong site lead candidate and working on selection of part-time staff, but wouldn't make official offers until we know this has been approved. And let's see, next one is just the next step. So, we're asking for program approval tonight. We would then go ahead and finalize staffing, that's the most important component. Opening a formal registration, possibly by the end of this week. We'll be doing some snack and meal planning, working with our nutrition services to make sure that's all good. Space setup, getting some materials, and then working on daily schedules and routines, which that site leader, once they're up and running, can really work on some of that. And then later in the board agenda, we'll ask you to authorize. Program would start October first, go through June fifth, every day after school until six PM. Total projected budget, kinda hard to say when we don't know the numbers, but I think it'll be about a hundred and fifteen thousand. And then that revenue is the part that is a little harder to guess just based on how many kids and how many of them qualify for free or reduced lunch. What questions do you have for us?
And again, for the board, the hope is that these two present, that they don't have to stay for a vote and that I can represent and answer any questions, but we don't need to keep them around for an hour. So we would love any questions that you might have to pop through in this time window.
Any meetings can be super exciting, you're welcome to stay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Or just follow along on YouTube.
Yeah, also true.
Double speed tomorrow.
Fifty-five seems like about how many we had in the past, fifty-five kids.
I think Beacons had more like ninety enrolled, but maybe on a given day, fifty-five? Because not every kid necessarily comes every day, so they might have been the fifty-sixty. So if we had fifty-five enroll, we might have a high day of forty or fifty. You know, it kinda depends on who comes every day.
Well, I get the feeling too that if you, if you build it, they will come, so to speak. It's a great program. I mean, I was there when they had it and it was, it was good. But how is this gonna look different from regular Beacons?
I think it will be similar. You know, we'll be trying to do some of the same creative and exciting opportunities. School age care though is very much, you know, designed kind of for the working family that needs a place for their kids to be after school. And so, one of the, kind of the ethos of school age care is you're gonna offer a lot of activity, but very choice-based also, that some kids are like, I just really wanna chill out or play outside. And then that's okay too. So there'll be some activities going as well as just free time. Like, we're out of school and we get to kind of be together.
And the staffing may look different.
Yeah.
Say that again?
The staffing may look different as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think Beacons had more staff probably. But we, I mean, we have ratios, we'll be operating on one to fifteen and probably a goal of less than that if the program's really small. It's hard to run, you know, when, when there's no principal, nurse, you know, all kind of that extra folks after school. You do need a fairly low ratio for after school, especially as you're getting started.
Thank you.
I have a question about the, the fees, that were they, are we fixed on those or could they go down? Could they, is there anything that would make it easier for families to sign up?
The, the twenty dollars a day is really what the market rate is. If you look around after school, especially if you get out of school on the early side before three PM, that's pretty much a regular rate. And so that was sort of what, we looked at more the market rate for that top rate. And then also looked at like, if we did that main, if that was our main rate, how would we make it work? And then the adding the sub, the free and reduced lunch rates is a lot because with this program being so new, we wouldn't be able to jump on, most child cares would use Washington, or not Washington, sorry, Hennepin County Assistance or C cap dollars so that families could get free childcare. With this program being so new, we probably wouldn't be able to get certified till late in the year to even start doing C cap dollars, so just knowing that in order to make it a little more accessible. I think it's pretty normal in, with a lot of our free and reduced athletics and things like that, to have it be about half off.
That makes sense, thank you.
This is very thoughtful. Appreciate that. The, the balance that you're seeking to achieve between meeting the, the need and also making an, an easy transition also for, for the students in particular. And I, I look forward to seeing what, what happens. I agree with Director List, I, I think people will come. And it's certainly safer also for the students to be in that environment that's familiar and also for, for the families. So, just wanna say thank you.
Then it looks like it's me for questions. So, I guess a couple of quick ones, just, did you do a projection of like what it would look like if somebody, if each of the three different, three, three different types of payments were to be for the whole time period? I didn't say that question at all.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, I had a little spreadsheet and we put in like, if everybody was free and reduced, what would the revenue look like versus if it was a mix? Versus if everybody was full paying kind of, and that's where there's that, that, what we think is probably the max risk. But, we'll see what kind of plays out for real.
So then that spreadsheet came up with roughly fifty thousand as revenue?
Sixty-five, I think it was.
As the max risk.
As the max, yeah.
Estimated round, more likely fifty to forty is more likely realistic?
For the revenue, which then puts us at sixty-five for risk.
No, for the loss, so if you took look at how much it's gonna cost.
One fifteen.
Yep, and then you, the how much revenue could come in.
That's what I was asking, fifty.
That could be, yeah.
Right.
Short by sixty-five thousand.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, so it sounded like fifty thousand was what you think you're gonna get for revenue because you've got sixty-five thousand short.
Right, no, it's more like sixty-something we think we would get, yeah. So, yeah.
So, so maximum risk of sixty-five.
Yeah.
But you think you're actually gonna pull in more, okay. And then, so, so then my actual other question was, is if I was paying twenty dollars a day, did you run the numbers on, I can't do that math fast off my head, for October first until June? did you run the numbers on, I can't do that math fast off my head, for October 1st until June 5th? What that number would look like?
It depends on how many kids there are. So yeah.
Just me, my kid, right? I'm 20 bucks, how many days?
Oh, like how much it costs? I think it's around 400 to 450 a month, depending on how many days. Because, you know, December has a lot less days in our school calendar than October, for example.
The, the reason, well, as I say, the reason why I'm asking is we, I don't remember what it was for, but we had done kind of a spreadsheet similar for the parents so they could look and see to understand what it would mean for them, right? Just to help them understand the cost when they're signing up for this. Versus, I mean, $20 a day doesn't sound bad. Big picture doesn't sound bad, but it's, it's like as you start to add it up, maybe like, ooh. But then I, yeah, I could handle that, right? Because of what I'm getting, so.
So I hear you. So as we do our work, if this moves forward, as we do our work advertising to the central commu-, or Centennial community, we should make sure we place some of those out. So for example, 150 days at $20 a day, if we're to start with 150 days, that's $3,000. So the max is somewhere around $3,000 for one student. But we can certainly make sure that that gets shared out as, as comprehensively as possible.
In your one pager, because I think the transparency of selling is like, here's why, you know, we're trying to help out and, well, I mean, you already did that with the survey, but how do we best communicate?
What is it that wouldn't be transparent? I'm sorry, I don't think I'm following.
Well, the, we've got the numbers here, but just helping the families to understand what, what it would look like.
Like multiplying it?
Yeah, if you're paid once a month, how much of your paycheck is gonna go towards your child's after-school care?
Again.
Okay.
As I said, we, we had done something like this, I'm, I'm forgetting which program it was, where we had had that kind of that schedule, schedule if you will, so that people could understand what commitment their family is making by signing up for something like this. I don't remember exactly what it was for, but I remember the flyer and like, because we had talked about it, we asked questions and then it came back at like the next meeting for what we're gonna show.
And I, what these made me think about is, I know at Fun Club, you can choose Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, all days. Like is there gonna be a minimum days per week to signing up like Fun Club is?
Yep, we do the same as Fun Club, they do a minimum of three days a week.
Minimum of three, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Any more questions? Then thank you. Again, you're welcome to stay. But we've got you, or if not, we've answered questions.
They're gonna cry all the way to their cars.
Yeah, right, they're gonna laugh away the cars. They're gonna watch that on YouTube.
All right, transitioning to superintendent goals, part of my public evaluation process. And just laying that out for the second draft. We took input at our last meeting, made a few adjustments, have some additional information to share. But grabbing this to either move forward with and help guide our admin team members and our leadership teams and to continue moving ourselves forward. So as we always do, we remind of that process, similar to Q Comp. 35% of it is tied to student achievement, specific data based on our gains. Process goals are those strategic plans, strategies and activities designed to improve our district. And then that final 30% really related to the overall evaluation that comes in in the spring. And so coming back to our measures, looking at that common measure of assessment proficiency and gap closure. I did receive a question about why did we pick these specific points? Really looking at growth in our FastBridge CBM reading in 5th grade and also looking at it in 8th grade and also reducing the gap for our students of color. Those are the transition points between our grades. And so 5th grade is the end of elementary school, 8th grade is the end of middle school. And as we know, we have vision cards with comprehensive data looks. But these are sort of that summary data, looking at the synthesis of all of our work in elementary and then in middle. Moving on, looking at our growth, really in addition to proficiency. And so really looking at 3rd grade in regard to reading and 8th grade in regard to math. And research data shows that 3rd grade is one of those really important points in regard to reading, because students move from learning to read to reading to learn. And then in 8th grade, having students proficient in math and regarding to algebra, that is one of those areas that also is sort of a future telling point. And so that's why we picked some of these as our high leverage area to focus on for my goals. And both of those really looking at some gains from where we have been in the past. Then looking at continuing our gains in regard to MCAs and also making sure to outline that we are continuing to close the gap between ourselves and the state of Minnesota. And so really looking at my evaluation in relation to that, specific to 3rd grade and 8th grade. And then also the summary of our middle school MCAs and the summary of our elementary MCAs. And as you know, in all of these areas, according to board guidance and our overall equity vision, making sure that as we make those gains, we continue to close the gap between white students and our students of color. One of those ongoing focal points of our district. Continuing on with graduation rate and continuing our focal point on graduation rate with a goal of 90% graduation rate across the board and in every category. We did take a look and reflect on the information in the box because as we know, the state of Minnesota does not publish graduation rate or any data for groups of demographic categories where there are fewer than 10. And so we wanted to basically explain that we are reporting our work with native indigenous students. Well, the state might not. And so what you see on there is you see a wide-ranging set of numbers for our indigenous group. Because MDE and what we put in is MDE doesn't publicly report those groups if there are fewer than 10. And so when our year shown, the number of group, the number of students ranges from 3 to 11. And so while the state of Minnesota in '21, '22, '23, '24 only reported one time, however indigenous students did, we reported all of them in every single year. And again, our gain, our goal is to make sure that we are at 90% or higher in each of those categories and we want to be transparent in that. So we hope that the revisions that we put into that box more clearly describes that and more clearly describes that this, this chart is actually really around continuing graduation rate gains and continuing gap closure for all groups regardless of what the state decides to report. We're gonna report on everyone. Then are some of those process goals and the really the things that we are gonna take as strategic plan actions that tie specifically to my evaluation. And so really looking around in the data area, continuing our work with administration and leadership use of data in decision-making and using that as a process. And so as a reminder, processes are guided by the actions that we take. If we pick the right processes, we should lead to those gains we're looking at. And so each of our admin team and teacher leaders, we continue to want to deepen our use of data. So at Prep Fest on August 4th, we trained everyone. We have school improvement plans and initial student did during opening week training and then we'll be having in my next update, which actually comes in February. We'll have had data teams and progress monitoring meetings in each of our schools next week and the week after to make sure that we're using that data to target the needs of our actual students. Similarly, making sure that since we do have FastBridge as a system-wide assessment and progress monitoring and adjusting what we are doing based on what the data suggests is a high goal. It was one of the areas that we noted as improvement in our last year's goals and our, our data didn't show what we were hoping. So we're looking at making sure that we actually implement screening for 95% of our students twice per month for those receiving tier-three interventions. And so when you think about what that means, we are progress monitoring all of our students, that's considered tier-one. Tier-two is students giving second level instruction or a second dose of instruction. And tier-three are those needing the largest amount of intervention. And so our system is set up to progress monitor those students twice a month and make sure that we are intervening with those supports. We believe that if we are able to do that effectively, that is where we'll see those achievement gains that we're looking for in the first part of my evaluation. And so we began that at Connect and Assess, one of our district's commitments to beginning that process early, which happens during workshop week. FastBridge assessments are in process across all of our schools. And that is something that we'll be continuing to do in an ongoing basis in the months ahead. Equity communication, improving our communication to all families about activities and scholarship activity, scholarship opportunities. So as we know in our survey data, information about opportunities to participate in, in activities was something that we had the lowest amount of report. We did look and that question was asked to all of our families. And so we did take a look at the data to be able to report back. In '24, '25, we had 530 students that were registered for an activity. 37.2% of those received a free or reduced discount and only 9% or 5% of our students, 28 of them, utilize scholarships. So with only 5% of our students utilizing scholarships, it indicates we probably need to figure out a better way to communicate that and communicate that data differently. So if you add it all together, those who received any form of discount between free and reduced scholarships, but then there also is a third sport free, up to 49% of our students did receive some form of a discount for participating in activities. Nonetheless, only 65% of our secondary students were aware and only 60% of our elementary students were aware, with 68 and 69% saying they're not a barrier. Which means that in that 30%, we need to figure out how to continue communicating scholarships specifically and reduced fees specifically in a way that increases engagement. One of those things that is our, our overall goals. Maintaining representation, we had a great increase in our survey participation data. It was approximately 500 students the year before, or 500 families in '24, '25. As a reminder, 1,335 parents guardians participated in the survey. And it was highly representative of our community. And so as a district that is, 72% students of color, district is representative. And so we were very proud of the outreach and strong work that we did to engage and make sure that we are gathering voice. And we want to continue to do that in all of the things that we do, both our survey, but then also in our strategic plan process, which we know will be occurring from December on through the spring. And so we want to make sure that we are extending that action and those activities into both of those areas. As you know, we continue on in the READ Act. And so one of our leadership goals is continuing to lead our district through Phase 1 and Phase 2. We are coming towards the second half or end component of Phase 1. 85% of our staff members have completed Units 1 through 4 of the synchronous component. And we have multiple staff who are trained and able to implement that at the site level. And so despite the fact that students are still coming out of college without having been trained, despite the fact that we might get new staff from districts who are coming in without that training. So for example, 12 of them have not begun. We have the ability to train them internally. And so we have made sure that we have set ourselves up to systemically utilize the READ Act training across our entire system. And then additionally, as you know, we believe in leading. And so every single one of our instructional management team members have completed letters for administrators and so completed the entire course and expected to do that and continue utilizing that as we update our teacher evaluation rubrics and the things that we're looking at in terms of what our look fours are in the classroom. Then our strategic plans, so we talked about at our previous meeting, that timeline and that process. We plan to have that published by the end of summer 2026. But this fall, we'll be having a study session coming up, actually at our next meeting. And then we will continue on beginning with the engagement process and really doing outreach and input from the January to March before we create that draft and push that forward to share that plan with our community. And just as a reminder, for all of those watching on YouTube, we are a strategic plan guided district. And so this is a time where your voice will actually guide a significant amount of the efforts over the coming years in Richfield Public Schools. Then finally, my evaluation and my goals wrap up. We have a parent and staff survey. You all do a survey of my direct reports. You all will give feedback on my overall performance and then we'll have a closed session for the evaluative process, which then leads to a public reporting and then we circle right back and begin the process again. So with that, I will pause and see if we're ready to move forward with these or if there are other questions or things you'd like edited or changed in round two of a presentation you all saw with some revisions from last meeting.
My teacher brain, if I go from the expected outcomes in Part 1 and I connect them to the processes plan, I do see that connection going backwards. So I feel very positive that if we do these processes, that we will see the, the results that, that we are expecting. I know that last year was the first, was the, the graduation cohort of the, the COVID year. And, and we saw losses represented in, in those. So I, I, I really hope that, well, hope is not a strategy. But I look forward to seeing the students, you know, go back to those levels and even go beyond.
Yeah, so just to remind the board, in COVID, there were approximately 12 students that we were not able to track where they went. 12 students, that actually represents 4% of our grad rate. And we did not really realize until four years later that that was gonna show up. We have learned from that. There are some similar things occurring as we think about our current enrollment, as some students are not returning to us and we don't now currently have documentation on where we are. And so what we are doing, we typically have systems of follow-up. But we're gonna make sure that students who have not enrolled in another school and might have gone to a different country, that we are basically putting our sleuth hats on. We are keeping a spreadsheet of all of those students, we are tracking them down even if it requires international communication. And we're making sure we know where students are because if a student falls, ends up in a situation where immigration changes their country of residence, if we don't know where they are attending school, they count as a Richfield High School dropout. And so it is a way that the federal government policies might indirectly hamper a graduation rate that may or may not have anything to do with the work that we do. But it is our responsibility and we now know, mistake on my part, I own it 110%, that it is our job to track down where every student lands and be able to document that for the overall system. Because we also want them to get on their record where they are and where they're continuing to progress in schools.
When you say we want them to get on their record, there's a lot of pronouns that are vague in there. We want who to get on record?
Our students.
We want our students.
So when we document in our records, our students have, they end up coded for the state of Minnesota where they are next. And so if a student transfers, let's say, to Bloomington Public Schools, there is a particular code. If they transfer to a charter school, there's a particular code. If they transfer out of state, there's a particular code. If they transfer out of country, there's a particular code. The ones that count as dropouts are then counted as the state of Minnesota as a dropout are students we have no code for, which is basically a no-record code. We don't want that to be on their record in the state of Minnesota as much as we don't want it to be on the high school record. Does that make sense?
So we don't want it to be on the students' record? And, and I guess I don't, I mean, that, that's understandable. But I guess it requires us to, to be able to find them where, if they go and they, it's, it's difficult to present to them what, what the burden, like what the downside of that is. They might not worry about what's happening.
Correct.
To their Minnesota education record.
Correct. Often there is some form of ability to communicate cross-country to determine if a student has enrolled, let's say, in, in a, in a high school in Canada. We haven't always, once a student does not return to us, at a certain point, we stop. We now know that they are coded as the state of Minnesota as a dropout. So if they came back five years later, they would be coded as a Minnesota dropout. And so we don't know what the implications of that are for them in that system. There might be none, but we haven't looked at that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're just wanting to do everything we can to diligently follow up to the extent that we possibly can.
Do we do this from K through 12?
We are doing the best that we can for all of our students, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But the specific record of, of drop, of being coded as a dropout is those who have already enrolled in high school. So anyone who started, was, attended 9th grade or later in Minnesota and left and last school of record was here?
Correct. The consequence for a kindergarten or a first grader is not the same. There isn't consideration for on a state record, a high school dropout.
Right.
And there isn't the same implication.
I guess that was my question.
We're trying to find out either way, there is extra, there's extra critical importance to figuring out the 9th through 12th graders.
And I know that we have a lot of that information because of the reports that we see of where did our kids go and where are we getting students from? But what it sounds like, there's a group that goes off.
Right, the biggest challenge, pretty typically you'll receive a records request from the district that they are going to. That will happen in the state of Minnesota, that will often happen outside of the state of Minnesota. When a student goes to a school in another country, we often do not get a records request. And so then it is, do you choose to follow up or do you not choose to follow up? And we are gonna choose very significantly to follow up at this point, wanting to make sure that those ended up coded correctly for that student's record and for our high school's record.
How long does it take to be like considered a dropout? Like is there a process you have to go through to like consider that they're a dropout? Or is it like a timeframe?
That's an interesting question. So students, once they pass the date of their anticipated graduation, they're counted in that way. And so if a student, let's say, was here for the first month of 9th grade and then, I'll just keep using Canada, went to Canada. If they pass. I'll just keep using Canada, went to Canada, if they passed their anticipated graduation date four years later and we never knew where they were, they would be considered a dropout. If they came back to any school in the state of Minnesota and we then had record, they would then be enrolled in that school, and it would not be coded in the same way. And Minnesota would not have that on their record.
Okay. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Great question.
Are you thinking of moving to Canada?
I think we all are.
I appreciate that we're measuring not only outcomes, but some of the inputs as well, in particular, the FastBridge reassessments that are going on on a twice-a-month basis. And I'm wondering if there's other inputs that would be good for us to be considering that are not, you know, once we realize they haven't graduated in June, there's not, there's not as much we can do to remedy that. And so one, one item that comes to mind is, like, attendance rates, if something like that is valuable to measure, too.
So yes and, they don't end up in my goals. So what I can tell you is, there's a set of data that are used that don't become part of my evaluation. And so the high school and the middle school are utilizing course pass rate. They're doing assignment complete, or not assignment, they're doing proficiency based on assessments, and they are monitoring that. They're also doing, they use a thing called Sabers, which is about social emotional and how is our social emotional culture and climate, and how are people feeling, and then they are also doing attendance rate. And so they have down at those more micro levels, they're monitoring, and a lot of those end up presented in the vision cards.
Okay, thank you.
Your plan with this was to, that this would be it, after this discussion, this is it going forward?
If there is significant input that requires revision, I can bring it back, or we can move forward with this, even if there are small revisions, and bring it back in mid-year, January, February with the update and make some of those refinements.
I ask just because, I'm just, as I listen to questions and reflect, I'm like, I feel, I feel like we're in the details a lot, which is good and bad, right? As the leader of our district, right, like, there's some, some of the very data-driven goals, right, of student performance and achievements, right? We want to have certain very specific metrics. But then on the flip side, I'm like, I feel like some of this is very prescriptive, like, we're trying to get down very detail for these goals, where it's like, again, your goals are bigger, where it's come up with a strategic plan, right? So that is just more my reflection. I don't understand how.
So I'd say, try to delineate between the process goals and then some of those achievement goals. So I, as you know, supervise the principals. And so Stacy Collins, our high school principal, has course pass rate, has student engagement goals in her evaluation, and she would be down in the finer points of the high school. If you think about, I also supervise at this point with no assistant superintendent, I'm supervising teaching and learning. And so Rachel Jens, who is overseeing some of that work, she is in charge of and has more detailed goals on what does REED Act training look like, how do we implement FastBridge in the assessments and progress monitoring at the elementary schools, and then how do we train to make sure our instructional coaches and our team members have the training to be able to implement that larger data goal? And so if you think about me overseeing, it's my job to train and prep all of our leaders with the admin, or with the data goals, the skills to utilize the data, then people who are my direct reports are then that next level of supporting that at the next level. And then the instructional coaches at the elementary are trained to the next level, and they are working at the teacher level. So for me, even though the most important thing happens in the classroom with the teacher, my job is to support the system that then, in each level, supports it down to that granular level.
All right, we can only impose goals on one person if enough of the six of us agree.
Yes. For anybody who needs that reminder, this is our one employee. More questions or comments about those goals?
Steve's goals always makes me very excited about project management, and like, there's a lot I've learned here for my personal life about this, so they're really good. It's fun, I think it's fun.
Well, I'm very fortunate to have team members who are very good project managers, who are very supportive and supporting others. It's very helpful.
And I appreciate you share that piece of, because like, when I think about your work, I've been here long enough, like, I understand that connection, but I'm glad you shared that, how that is connected to your direct reports, individuals, and their process goals. Because like you say, you're preparing the leadership and managing the system that connects it all.
Yeah, and as Tim pointed out, your leverage of supervising me guides my leverage of supervising my team, who supervises and works with their team. And it has to be these systems of expectations, what are we trying to accomplish? How do we support that? The support systems are very important. And then that other word accountability is, how do we make sure that we are reporting back and just sort of sharing how we are doing, whether that is successful or not, and then how we're adjusting based on that.
More questions, comments? Okay? So then it looks like we'll see this in a while.
Yes, you will.
Good luck.
Good luck. The next item for approval is a consent agenda, which contains a collection.
Commendations.
Sorry, commendations. I skipped, there's a big bunch of commendations.
There is. There's actually two, even though it looks large. So Richfield Public Schools would like to commend the staff of Richfield High School. So there was an anonymous communication specifically sent. Obviously, it was challenging last Thursday. Hi there, just a quick note after yesterday's open house. I've been reflecting on the experience of being welcomed in a school building after hours, after a long day, long couple of weeks, long string of entirely two unprecedented times, and I wanted to say thank you. It's so clear that the adults at RHS are a team for our community's kids. Faculty, support staff across all departments, nutrition personnel, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, and admin, I am grateful. RHS is an asset in our community, and I'm happy that my child is there. So we want to thank our RHS staff members for their dedication, showing up for our students and families, especially during those difficult times. We want to share that you are appreciating. So thanks to that adult that wanted to share that out. And then, RPS would like to celebrate our high school technology interns for their outstanding work this summer, providing great support to the IT department and helped the district get to a level of readiness that allowed our year to start strong for both staff and students. So we want to recognize Kalen Baynan, Carlos Rosales Chavez, Jack Freel, Jordan Tim, Maxwell Montiel, and PJ Oyango. Additionally, we also want to recognize George Enne and Aaron Garrick, who supervised and guided our student interns to success. So great job, everyone, and we appreciate those high school IT interns and our IT team. Then finally, we have our typical acknowledgement of Employee Appreciation Day. So a reminder that September twenty-third is Ed Tech Day, where we celebrate staff members who work in the tech department. So they play a vital role in keeping our schools connected, secure, and running smoothly every day. Their expertise, dedication, and behind-the-scenes efforts ensure that students and educators have reliable access to the technology tools and systems they need to succeed. We deeply appreciate their commitment to innovation, problem-solving, and continuous support across the district. We appreciate you Ed Tech folk. And September twenty-sixth is Human Resource Professional Day. HR staff work tirelessly to recruit, support, and retain the dedicated professionals serving our schools. Their commitment to fostering a positive and supportive work environment helps ensure that every student benefits from a strong, stable, and motivated team. We're deeply grateful for their professionalism and care that helps RPS thrive, so thank you, HR team members.
Thank you for that. Now, we can move to the consent agenda. The next item for approval is a consent agenda, which contains a collection of routine or fairly routine business items that we consent to pass in bulk without individual discussion. I'll pause for a moment to see if there are any questions or requests before we proceed. Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. We got a race there. We have a motion by Director Cole and a second by Director Spencer. Any questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none, bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Moves us on to old business. We have a couple items tonight for us, before us. Policy one oh one, harassment prohibition, and administrative guidelines one oh three dot two, second read.
Absolutely. So this and bullying prohibition are both going to be in their second read. They've been reviewed by the Student Support Services Department, some suggested changes. Policy will be reviewed by safe and supportive schools, but it will not come back till October twenty-seventh. So you're not going to see that at our next meeting, you're going to see that in a couple of meetings. And so, just as a reminder, the policy itself had some minor changes. You'll note on, there are some small changes based on statutory language in regard to protected classification on page two. You will see in regard to sexual orientation, and that's specific statutory language on page three, but those are the main and non-significant changes in regard to the policy itself. When we look at the guideline, we also wanted to make sure that we are adding in that we have an online form mirroring the reporting form as an option. As we look at the work in regard to these forms, we work collaboratively with students or families who are making these reports or staff, because we do have a system for documenting all for, all reports of bullying or harassment, and then also the responses to the incidents. So you'll see some relatively significant drafted updates to those forms, describing what parents and guardians can do, describing what we will be doing as a school. And so this took a significant amount of input and feedback in regard to language. And so you'll see those. Again, as a second read, it's not for passage tonight. That is for your review and for added input. And again, a reminder, we won't be back until October twenty-seventh, after we have had those additional voices in, looking at this policy and guideline for updates.
Questions, comments?
I had a comment about the administrative guideline. There are parts in there where we start listing resources for parents or students or folks to, you know, for where to get supports or information or other information. You know, for example, if you feel your child is being bullied, or your child is acting as a bullier harasser or witnessing it. And I wonder if it's the right place for that material, for that information. I would think that would be more in a parent or student handbook and not necessarily within a guideline, an administrative guideline, which tells the, you know, the administrators as well as the community, this is how we will handle your complaints and concerns. You know, just like, there must be other parental resources that we have that we aren't placing into administrative guidelines, and I just think we should focus all of such resources, at least in one place, and not, you know, it's okay if we leave them here, but then we have to put them also in the, in the student-parent handbook for the different schools, because I don't think it's reasonable to expect people to go to our policies and our guidelines to find, you know, to find general information about what do I do with this bad, with this bad situation.
Yeah, I agree. They'll go to the handbook before they go to the policy.
Yeah, Mr. Paulson had shared some of that feedback prior to the meeting, and so we want to make sure, as we are updating, that we take a look at each of the student handbooks and make sure that the parent handbooks and that we have those resources and those supports in all of the areas. And so one of the things the board has often done is made sure that our practice is aligned to the actual policy and the guidelines. And so obviously, one of the checks we're going to need to do is make sure that we have that in place prior to October twenty-seventh, so we can report back. And if not, we can look at updating our student handbooks to make sure that we have resources and supports documented in all the locations where people can access them.
More questions or comments? And really, the questions or comments could be about both or either, right?
Yes, when we transition to the next, I'm basically not going to give a big explanation. It is very similar. There are small changes in regard to the bullying policy also, and then the guideline is a very similar set of updates, which will have the same thing, so I'm not going to fully repeat myself. But yes, we can take feedback on harassment, policy and guideline, and if you would like, you could certainly do the other one at the same time. Or obviously, as you know, we now have somewhere in the six-week range before this comes back as we gather that voice, and so we are open to any feedback at any time, then we'll make updates based on the input.
Both are going to the same committee, right?
Correct. They both, yes.
I didn't mean to slow us down, is there questions, comments?
Do we know what the safe and supportive schedule is, what policies they're going to be looking at yet?
Yes, we do. Yep, so I can share that out with the board in a Friday update. I'll make sure to do that. And they are gathering the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee, and I believe we are working on getting all the dates published and updated for all of our committees and all our advisories.
Any other questions, comments?
The bullying reporting form is in the handbook, Tim, but there's not a lot of details on it, so it might be a good reason to just revise that.
Yeah.
Thanks for looking for that.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing head nodding or shaking. There we go, okay. Then if not, then that'll bring us to new business. So skip right through. So the first item on the list we bumped brings us the preliminary levy certification twenty-twenty-five payable twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you very much. We have for your approval tonight a request to authorize the maximum for the levy amount. This is a proposed levy and, which we have to submit prior to September thirtieth. This is what generates the information that then rolls into the taxpayer notifications, and then in December, you'll have the chance to see the truth and taxation presentation as well as make, make final determination. So this is a pretty routine process where we authorize the maximum levy. There's still a number of working parts that come together as part of that process here between now and the beginning of October, including additional calculations coming from the state as well. In the packet, you do have kind of a highlight of the current status of the levy, which breaks it down by the different categories of levy authority. You'll notice that there are a number of areas, there are reductions currently, most of those are tied in with projected reduced enrollment for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. One of the things to note that we were watching is number nine, the referendum technology. This has been an area that we have been seeing, we've seen increasing because of increased property values. You'll notice this is the first year where there's an actual decrease in that referendum for technology, because the abatements in the district and other increases have not been occurring at the same rate as they were historically. So there is projected a slight decline in that referendum technology levy authority this time. You'll also see on line twenty, the largest increases in the abatement and other adjustments. So because of those changes in property valuations, there's authority that the district has to levy authority for that specifically. So a couple of highlights there. Again, this is just a request to certify the maximum at this point, and then final decisions will be made in December when the board approves the final levy for payable Are there any questions?
Why are we looking at an enrollment reduction in twenty-six, twenty-seven?
We use a number of different models, which kind of factor in what our projected enrollment changes will be. We've seen slight declines every year. Last year, we saw an increase, but even previous years to that, we've had slight declines in our enrollment, so that is factored in as part of this projection.
More questions, comments? Motion?
Just for clarity, this is a preliminary, and we finalize it in December, so we have the, and this is the max. So in December, we have the option to peel back if we see a reason or a cause to.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll just articulate one other piece that's included in the board action, but it also does set that truth and taxation presentation for the December one board meeting at that regular scheduled meeting at seven PM.
I will move the item as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Director Paulson and a second by Director List. Any discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The chair votes aye, and the proposed levy is approved. Brings us to the after-school care program that we heard about earlier. I'll just want to make it more detailed. At Centennial Elementary School.
Go ahead, Craig, you got this.
Okay, yeah, so this does have a request for the board to authorize our Richfield Public Schools Community Education to open the after-school childcare program at Centennial Elementary School for the year, as the board heard earlier today about the preparation that's gone into. As the board heard earlier today about the preparation that's gone into that program, the potential fees that are associated with that, and then just kind of the financial implications of, it may end up impacting our general fund. And given the priority, make sure our families have appropriate after-school childcare at Centennial. It is a recommendation that that program be approved by the board tonight.
Well, I move that we accept the after-school care program at Centennial Elementary School.
There's no questions. We have still our questions before.
Well played, sir.
I will second.
Look at you guys, you have a motion by Director Liss and a second by Director Paulus. It's kind of unsane together like that. Any more questions? Because to Ken's point, we asked them all earlier.
I, I do have one follow-up question. I'd just like maybe a request that we get an update on what we believe the financials will be once we see enrollment, so maybe December, January, if we can get an update on.
All right, I see both Mr. Holgy and Ms. Quam noting that down, and so we will definitely have an update. Early winter, December, give or take.
Any more questions or comments? Anyone? Okay. If not, then we'll bring it to, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Chair votes aye, and we have approved the after-school care program at Centennial Elementary School. Next is the property liability, fleet, professional, and faithful performance, and cyber liability insurance renewal. That's a mouthful.
Very good, thank you very much. We do have, again, also requesting your authorization for the administration to retain our current insurance carriers for our property liability, fleet, professional, faithful performance, and cyber insurance coverages, as indicated in the packet below. You can see the side-by-side premiums from 24, 25, and what the changes for 25, 26. We've worked with Steve Gillette and Debbie Turner from Dolph Insurance, again, to secure these coverages, or get quotes on these coverages with this recommendation moving forward. You can see overall with that package, there's a net reduction of $18,007 a year over year, which is about a 2.75% reduction overall. The property values were all increased as part of this coverage, as far as our facilities, as well as updated equipments, equipment lists, and details regarding our student and employee status. The premium, largest premium increases were in the general liability umbrella, and the school psychologist professional liability, even though some of those were smaller amounts. And then the largest decrease is in the automobile policy. There's a packet of additional information that's also included in the packet that provides information about losses over the previous years and things like that, if the board is interested. Otherwise, we would request your approval for renewal of these coverages with the current carriers with those premiums that were identified.
Questions, comments?
I don't, other than I, it looks reasonable to me, and, you know, I ask periodically if we consider our limits, and, or if we have, you know, additional deductibles, that would be useful information to have. I think we're, I think it was within the document that we're keeping all the limits the same as expiring.
Yep.
But at some point, those limits lose their, their oomph, as inflation increases the amount of damage. I mean, it's within property, it's baked in, but within the casualty lines, it's not. And so at some point, you know, we may consider additional limit.
Yeah, and I think we've looked at some changes in the past. We do have some statutory limitations on our liability as well. So I, I'll, we'll double check and make sure, but I don't believe those have changed necessarily, so.
And that, that, I'm not, I hadn't factored that in, thank you.
More questions or comments? Or a motion?
I will move that we authorize the administration to retain the current carriers for property liability, fleet, professional, faithful performance, and cyber insurance coverages, as indicated.
I'll second.
You like all that?
I'm gonna just say, we have a motion by Director Spencer and a second by Director Paulus. Again, a mouthful. Any more questions or comments? I like the head shaking, then I know that, go ahead and bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The chair votes aye, and we have an approved policy for insurance updates. Brings us to policy 715, purchasing administrative guidelines 715 dot one.
All right, first read. And so as a reminder, this is just to refamiliarize ourselves before the editing, second read, and finalization process. And so this just outlines the methodologies, rules, and regulations by which the district goes about purchasing, and also clarifying the documentation and avoidance of any factual or appearance of the fact of conflicts of interest. And so that's the guideline, and then the purchasing talks about vendors, tax, conflicts of interest, procurement, and all of those particular processes. So we have that in front of you, along with the MSBA model policy, again, for that read over. And we will have those edits and updates for our next board meeting, and are certainly able to take any form of input now, or in the coming weeks ahead.
Questions, comments? Seeing head shaking, good thing. Brings us to the last item on the agenda, or, huh, in new business, which is donations.
All right, and so, recommended you accept the following with gratitude. The RHS Girls Volleyball Team received a donation of $1,200 from the Fred Babcock VFW number 5555. So thank you to the Fred Babcock VFW 5555.
I'll move that we accept the donation with gratitude.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Director Paulus and a second by Director Liss. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The chair votes aye, and we accept the donation with gratitude. Brings us to advanced planning. First item is a legislative update, which there is something in the packet.
Yes, we actually placed an update in the packet, because as there are significant bills, and we don't do this often, but there's a pretty significant bill that has a reasonable chance of moving forward. The US House advanced a spending bill, decreasing the federal funding by about 15% or $12 billion from current levels. Really wanted to outline those top three bullets, two of which we have direct access, and one we have indirect access. Teacher training Title II and English learner support Title III funds, those are at significant risk, as are full-service community schools and adult education. And then finally, preschool development grants and childcare access for parents in schools, which does some indirect funding. And so those are all areas that we do not currently have planned for future reductions, but are currently in a bill to be reduced at the federal government. There are also some policies that are within this bill for us to be aware of. There are provisions banning federal funds for participating in certain diversity, equity, inclusion, or critical race theory actions, blocking schools that receive funds from allowing transgender girls and women to compete in athletics. And then preventing the Education Department, or the Federal Department, from enforcing new rules on sex discrimination, student loan forgiveness, or some other areas. And so, we just need to be aware that currently there is, moving forward, a federal bill that would impact funding, and then also have some possibilities. We don't really know the implications of what it would be for how certain things are implemented across different districts in the country. We don't know what that might be from a policy perspective, but we just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that.
Questions?
Is this one of those funding cuts that would shine upon us immediately without warning, other than the vote?
We don't believe Title II, III, I mean, we, we do not currently have a full-service community school grant. We have, are part of a consortium, Metro South ABE. We do receive a reasonable amount of Title II funds and of Title III funds, and so we don't believe they would be removed immediately. We believe they would not be in the next budget. And so, if that makes sense. But you never know, because we have seen things move forward, and all of a sudden, funding freeze or disappear, which is what happened with 21st century grant funds. And so it is certainly possible that funds we had anticipated do not arrive.
Okay. That's, that's what I was getting at, I think.
We were hopeful that that doesn't happen as a, hey, we just passed this, and now we're not sending what had been promised, but we don't know.
Right, as Director Cole said on a prior one, hope is, unfortunately, isn't a strategy or a plan, and so the past practice has been, expect the worst.
In case, yes. So we want to be aware of that possibility.
All right, thank you.
Other comments or questions on this?
Nothing that can be said in public.
I will take that as a move to the next item. Information and questions from the board. Suggested future agenda items.
I'm sorry, I, before we move on, I noticed that we were handed a packet. Sorry, I, before we move on, I noticed we were handed a packet of MSBA information about, about upcoming meetings and training sessions, and I noticed that there's a Phase Three and Phase Four School Board Member Training Class that, that is scheduled within here. There's a Student Board Representative Event, and there's also, they're, they're doing Phase One and Phase Two before, in December, not January. And so for our not-yet-elected, but likely-to-be-elected two candidates, we should be reaching out to them to make sure that they are aware of it, and can, can plan on either December or January, for that sort of important and necessary training to get as up to speed as they can for Phases One and Two. But for those who are already on the board, Phase Three and Phase Four are important just to, to go hear the stories, and, and hear from what, what a best practice would be from a board.
Thank you for that reminder. We will make sure to transparently communicate to our likely electees, or at the very least our candidates, the dates of MSBA training, because that is expected of new board members.
I also, I didn't get an opportunity to speak when the commendations were meant, were mentioned, but I was also here for the evening of orientation for the high school last Thursday, and really appreciate the teachers and staff that were here on a very long day, very difficult day, all with smiling faces. I was here until after 7:00, because my son wasn't able to come until towards the end. And despite the fact that we were walking the halls at 7:05, teachers were still very happy to talk to us and excited that, that we were there to talk to them. So I just want to echo that gratitude of the teachers and staff that were here that evening.
Yeah, extremely impressive how they, they were able to just compartmentalize and move forward and handle the task at hand on an extremely long day. I also visited, just to say hello.
Administratively, I would echo that gratitude. I would just say, you know, one of the hardest things when you have a hard day in school is, it's our adults who know they have to be there for the kids. So the conversation about whether you cancel an open house, or whether you make changes, there are people in our community who have to be together for them to feel okay. And so it's our job as the professionals to show up, and our, our team does an incredible job of doing that, so I'm very proud of them for that work.
I think we should say we all are.
And we all are, thank you.
I, I want to give a shout-out to our Richfield High School leadership throughout the way that they have handled perceived threats, the way that they have guided the students, and also the level of communication. There are things that sometimes our kids don't tell us, but that the teachers know about, and, 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 and I have felt this week that leadership at the high school is, is seeing students as if they're really their own kids. I, I sense that empathy, and, and as a parent, it can be hard in the morning to see off your kids going to school, and it is really reassuring to know that they're coming here, and they have that supportive group of adults guiding them, so, thank you.
Anything else? I've got suggested future agenda items.
Oh wait, can I suggest? Okay. Okay, so the first thing is taking more precaution when dropping off students near the buses. I realize that there's a lot of traffic, a lot of students crossing, and it's like, it becomes very messy for the bus drivers, for the parents, and the students, and it puts everyone at risk. And then another thing was adding a English class for DLI students. I feel like maybe expanding more knowledge into English would be beneficial. That way, I don't know, maybe it'll work out for future classes and future opportunities. Yeah, for DLI students.
We will pass both those recommendations on to Richfield High School. So I'll repeat those, because I know Ms. Quam was typing furiously. One is extra support supervision at bus drop-off pickup, to make sure that kids who are being dropped, I'll just say aloud, on the wrong side of the street where they're not supposed to, are getting better supervision and more safety. And then I also heard us examining enrollment and need for a possible English class in the dual-language component, and making sure that we're offering that at the high school. So I will be following up with the high school admin, so thank you, thank you.
Any other suggested or future agenda items? I think we've got a lot coming up in the future, so I don't know if we need more. Okay, future meeting dates. Again, we've got October 6th. Remember, that's a study session, so we'll be starting at 5:00. Be a full night that night. And then, because of upcoming elections, we've got October 27th, which is why we're pushing back one week from our normal schedule. So that'll be our public comment night. Which brings us to our normal time, which we would be adjourning, but we're not tonight. We are moving into closed session to discuss labor negotiations. As such, we'll consider a motion to move into closed session as allowed by Minnesota State Statute 13D30, 13D03. I've said it so many times, I'm not sure I slowed down, for labor negotiation strategy.
I'll move that we enter closed session as allowed by Statute 13D03, for the purpose of labor negotiations strategy.
I'll second.
Tough one there. We have a motion by Director Paulus and a second by Director Spencer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Chair votes aye, and we will move into closed session. After brief, brief recess, the board will begin a closed session in our private room. Will return to this meeting room to officially adjourn, but upon completion of the closed session, there will not be any further business other than to adjourn. For those following live, following on the live stream, this will be the end of the session. Thank you for attending.